Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. And then, I guess I'll say before we get started that we do have some snacks and refreshments over here, celebrating that it is Superintendent Wayne's last meeting joining us. And I'll say that again once we get to open session. So feel free to help yourself to any cookies and water at this time. And then for closed session, we have two items. We have item A, public employee discipline dismissal release. And item B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 956.9. And then we'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM. Okay.
To order at 7:00 PM. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here.
Moving on to four, superintendent's report and recognition. I will turn over to interim superintendent Wayne.
Good evening. Last meeting we shared about graduations. So while the school year ends, summer, learning never stops. And so we do have our summer programs. And so just want to highlight our summer programs have started. And it's really great to see kids engaged in learning over the summer. And we want this during the year too as well. But here you get to see students have hands-on opportunities to learn, to engage in art, to engage with technology. And so we're really proud of the summer programs that have started. Something neat about Antioch that at least in other districts I've been in, they also have a swim and adventure camp that the district sponsors. And so students get an opportunity to be outside, learn pool safety and water safety, while also engaging in fun activities with their classmates. And so if you want to bring, you know, one smile brought to your face, go check out the swim and adventure camp. Where is it at again? At Antioch High, so at Antioch High School. And then this is also a time where we're able to do projects at our school sites. And tonight you'll be approving the different playgrounds to go to sites using the Measure B funds. We're first of all, just very excited that new playgrounds are coming in. When you go to our sites, you can see that's needed. But also the real intention in bringing in accessible and inclusive playgrounds. And so you can see here from, if you can't see here from the design, and let me make it bigger on my screen, that on the right is the one for Kimball. And it's showing the actual design with the, let me make this a little bigger here, with what, you know, the kind of features that make it accessible, where there's multisensory elements. And, you know, how it encourages children to play. So they have like a vestibular area for movement and balance, a proprioceptive area for body positions. It's pretty, I'm learning some new vocabulary here, tactile, auditory, visual, and even olfactory components to them. And so, yeah, so we're really excited that our students will be able to have access to, to the new playgrounds that come into the schools. And then lastly, I do want to appreciate, I'm going to be sharing as an item, just my leadership transition report. And this is my last board meeting and my time in Antioch ends on June 30th. But I know this is a superintendent reports plus opportunity for recognition. So I just want to appreciate the time and the opportunity I've been given here in Antioch. And, you know, really see this as a district with promise and you're moving forward with a purpose. And, you know, Antioch I've learned is a community with passionate educators, resilient students, and a community that cares about its schools. And you, you know, have really embraced the opportunities to move forward and improve from the work you're doing as a board government.
To order at 7:00 PM. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Moving on to B, reports from closed session. We do have a report out. The Board of Trustees took action in closed session by unanimous vote of the trustees present to adopt the June 25, 2025 Advisory Decision issued by a third-party hearing officer, consistent with District Board Policy 4218, concluding there is sufficient evidence to dismiss a classified manager. Accordingly, and having adopted the decision as its own, the Board hereby orders the immediate termination of said employee and directs administration to issue written notice to the former employee of their immediate termination from district employment. Moving on to Item C, Flag Salute. Vice President Rocha, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Oh, please. I'll stand. And can you put your hand on your... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Moving on to four, Superintendent's Report and Recognition. I will turn over to Interim Superintendent Wayne.
Good evening. Last meeting, we shared about graduations. So while the school year ends, summer, learning never stops. And so we do have our summer programs. And so just want to highlight our summer programs have started. And it's really great to see kids engaged in learning over the summer. You know, and we want this, you know, during the year too as well, but here you get to see students have hands-on opportunities to learn, to engage in art, to engage with technology. And so we're really proud of the summer programs that have started. Something neat about Antioch that, at least in other districts I've been in, they also have a swim and adventure camp that the district sponsors. And so students get an opportunity to be outside, learn pool safety and water safety, while also engaging in fun activities with their classmates. And so if you want to bring, you know, one smile brought to your face, go check out the swim and adventure camp. Where is it at again? At Antioch High. So at Antioch High School. And then this is also a time where we're able to do projects at our school sites. And tonight you'll be approving the different playgrounds to go to sites using the Measure B funds. We're, first of all, just very excited that new playgrounds are coming in. When you go to our sites, you can see that's needed. But also the real intention in bringing in accessible and inclusive playgrounds. And so you can see here from, if you can't see here from the design, and let me make it bigger on my screen, that on the, on the right is the one for Kimball. And it's showing the actual design with the, let me make this a little bigger here, with you know, the kind of features that make it accessible, where there's multisensory elements, and you know, how it encourages children to play. So they have like a vestibular area for movement and balance, a proprioceptive area for body positions. It's pretty, I'm learning some new vocabulary here, you know, tactile, auditory, visual, and even olfactory components to them. And so, yeah, so we're, we're really excited that our students will be able to have access to, to our, the new playgrounds that come into the schools. And then lastly, I do want to appreciate, I'm going to be sharing as an item, just my leadership transition report. And this is my last board meeting, and my time in Antioch ends on June 30. But I know this is a superintendent reports plus opportunity for recognition. So I just want to appreciate the, the time and the opportunity I've been given here in Antioch. And you know, really see this as a district with, with promise, and you're moving forward with a purpose. And you know, Antioch, I've learned is a community with passionate educators, resilient students, and a community that cares about its schools. And you, you know, I've really embraced the opportunities to move forward and improve from the work you're doing as a board governance team in your governance workshop, to the thoughtful process you went through, and community-driven process you went through to bring in a new superintendent who has already, you know, reached out and we're collaborating to make sure it's a smooth transition, to the work by staff here and the district leadership. You know, really see that, the, the opportunities for improvement. And I know there's a commitment to collaboration and to increasing transparency and trust. And so personally, I want to say it's been an honor to serve the Antioch community. And you know, I was leaving a difficult leadership situation, but you know, I came here because for me, it was important to be, to stay connected with schools and with what's happening with our students. And so I appreciate you gave me that opportunity, that even coming after a difficult leadership experience, you saw that I might be able to contribute to the district. And for me, it was an energizing experience as well, and I'm excited about the future of Antioch. So thank you very much. That concludes my report.
And so we do have some snacks and refreshments here in recognition of Interim Superintendent Wayne, and kind of just commemorating that this is last meeting. So feel free to help yourself at any time to any of those, for those of you physically present here in the room. As you said, later we'll be talking under our action items, the leadership transition report, but now is an appropriate time if any of my trustees want to say any, any words or comment on, you know, Superintendent Wayne's last meeting. And I do have some words that I'll share afterwards.
I'll share. I just wanted to say thank you so much as a new board member and just really not knowing what to expect and having a little bit of a rocky transition, I felt. Like I, I just felt like, you know, didn't have my sea legs, didn't know what direction I was going. You just really helped me understand board governance and set some expectations. And I will miss our every other Thursday check-ins. So thank you so much, Wayne.
And I would like to say thank you as well. As trustee Smith said, that we were, you know, new board members, but at the time you were new to the district as well. And you never missed a beat. You were always very approachable. You always had a smile on your face, no matter how you were feeling, just like right now. And so, and you were very helpful in whatever questions we had and I had, you were, you responded the best way you could, even on weekends. So I just want to say thank you for that. And then just being there as a added support for the special ad hoc committee. So again, thank you. I wish you all the best. I know wherever you go, you're going to do great. And, but get some rest.
I was amazed as a newbie that you were so going around and visiting every school and making sure that you got acquainted. I just didn't realize that it was an important thing that we needed to have, and it's been a while since that's happened. And I think for me, being on the board, although I'm the one that's been here the longest, it brought a structure. You brought back what we should have had in the routines that you carry as a board member and understanding. And it was hard because you had new people that hadn't been there yet. And yet there is a way that you're supposed to run an organization as a board, and you brought that back. And I love the, actually the meetings that we used to have. It brought information and we can exchange. And I just thank you very much. I think you did a great job in one year. Amazing.
Months. It was months. Thank you, Dr. Wayne, for keeping the ship sailing and keeping everything safe. And just in this rocky transition that we had, I think we needed your calmness during that time. So thank you.
Yeah. And I think, you know, having been the board president in this time, I worked a lot more closely. I think I just really deeply appreciate, I think, your collaborative nature. I think it was, it always felt like, you know, we were always working on things together, and it felt like you were always bringing in other like staff members and other people in the district. And I really appreciated your understanding of systems and really understanding the role of the interim superintendent and the needs of the district at the time. Because I do think, yeah, we needed structure and specifically, we didn't just need someone to keep the district running. We needed someone to build structure and prepare our district for the permanent superintendent we were going to get to, that we can really start truly feeling like we can move forward. And I think that's really, it was clear that you understood that that's what this district needed and that was going to help this district thrive. And I really think, you know, the thing that consistently, you know, reinforced that we made the right decision in bringing you on here is just a number of staff members that stopped me at different points in time and just said like, I really appreciate, you know, Dr. Wayne's leadership right now. I appreciate the stability he's bringing. I appreciate the communication that he's having. All of these like unprompted things, I didn't ask them for their, they would flag me down and say these things. So I think that was, I think, just a real morale boost, I think, for the school district to, to have people feel that we had a sense of leadership. And so I really thank you for being so intentional about the way that you approached this work because, again, we could have brought someone in, they could have kept the school district going, but that's not what we needed, and you knew that that wasn't what we needed. So thank you. So moving on then to public comments, do we have any public comments? None today? Moving on to, oh, we jump into immediately then into district reports, talking about the transition reports. I'll turn it right back over to you, Superintendent Wayne.
Thank you. So the full report is attached to the board agenda and available here in the audience. Just wanted to share some highlights, and I have 10 minutes to do so. And in the full report, I give some background and context, offer my observations and analysis, share four key recommendations, as well as end with the appreciation I gave. And so I'm going to, you know, go dive right to my overall assessment. And there is five key points here. One, you're well positioned to make meaningful progress toward academic excellence and educational equity. I think you saw that particularly in the LCAP update that Educational Services provided and the work that's happening around literacy, around professional learning communities, around chronic absenteeism, the alternative to suspensions. And so you, you have a lot to build on to be able to move forward and are starting to see results, actually. And then just said, really appreciated the board and the leadership team saying, we want to engage in effective governance. I mean, you put yourselves out there, not just by having the governance workshop, but having a self-assessment that was public and where you saw you, you had some areas of growth, but you said, we're going to embrace this. And that's what I've gotten from the leadership team here as well. They are eager to move forward with the plans that are in place to improve outcomes for students and want things to function. Again, particular strengths in instructional improvement efforts that can serve as a template for other areas, like what you've done around early literacy. And I'll speak to that a bit more, but you know, it can be an example for what you need to do with math, because you're going to see the math results aren't, aren't where they need to be. You have some stability around staffing and finances, particularly compared to other districts of your size or your student population. And, but you, you know, you do need to continue managing that, and there will be difficult decisions ahead. And then in spite, you know, and I think you noticed, I, you know, generally am an optimistic, positive person, look for the good in things, but while doing that, we are talking about the future of our students. And we can't ignore or cover, you know, paper over the fact that there are real gaps in student achievement, as well as in school culture, systemic coherence, community trust, and communication that need to be addressed to realize their full potential. So, you know, I don't want the, where we're highlighting the positive to both, don't want it to be taken away from that we have work to do, but also don't want to take away from the work that needs to be done. And so I share in the full report kind of what, what leads to that overall assessment and break down each of those bullet points. But just wanted to share, here are some recommendations for moving forward. And I call them the four Cs: clarity, coherence, culture, and communication. Around clarity, you've already, you've already noted this, and I know the new superintendent, Dr. Williams, you've given this charge to her, that to work with you to establish goals and a strategic plan, and then define those priorities, roles, and expectations, so people are really clear on what you're working towards. And then have coherence. One thing I heard a lot, and I'm looking at our labor partner leaders, they've shared that there's been a lot of, you know, improvement efforts that have happened. And can feel like from a classroom teacher perspective, things have changed a lot, or there are different, different expectations. And so there really needs to be coherence and need to stay focused on, on the few key strategies that you think will really make a difference. And then you've talked about the need to, to change the culture and really have one of high expectations and shared accountability. And then also improving the communication. It's improved in, in the last six months, and I think with the new school year, a new superintendent, there's a new opportunity to really show the community what's to expect from Antioch Unified. And so just for a little on each area, I mentioned for the clarity, you really want those goals to be around student outcomes. So that, that should be the North Star for the district. You're bringing in, you know, an experienced superintendent, so she's prepared to develop a strategic plan. And then again, staying focused on those, those priorities. Because we know as the year comes up, the year passes, things come up that might feel tempting to address, but you want to stay focused on those major strategies that will have an impact. For coherence, when we, so you heard me mention, I really feel like UFL and PLC implementation can serve as templates for how to move forward with district improvement efforts. But there are areas that need to be strengthened. You just approved bringing in new assessments, like you do this great UFL implementation, but you didn't have the district-wide assessments to really see, you know, for every student, how is it impacting their literacy in K-1, 2? Next year, you'll have that assessment. So you don't want to take the foot off the pedal. You want to make sure that you're, you're, you're really looking at that. And even, Dr. Jag and I spoke and talked about having, you know, a few times a year where you're looking at that data at the board level. And same thing, you know, there's been work around these other areas, instructional approach. Do want to acknowledge the work done by the Special Education Ad Hoc Committee was, has been really powerful. And you're going to see a report in September that I think provides some very clear direction about how to bring coherence to special education. And particularly around training and onboarding of staff, our parent educator staff. So I'm excited for what trustee Brown and Kobo Smith and the team are going to be presenting. And then always can work on cross-departmental collaboration, but also support for multilingual learners. You know, we were talking about the different achievement gaps that exist. And there's good work happening. Want to highlight the multilingual department with Ms. Phillips and Ms. Ibarra. This year, they brought in iPads that have translation on it, have, you know, created more access for the students and families, but really need to, again, push on those student outcomes. And you have an amazing, two amazing DLI programs that I think can use some work on coherence. And there's an opportunity even to perhaps have a school-wide DLI program at Fremont after renovation, because it's popular for families. Both programs have a waitlist, and so that's an area I think that's worth looking at in the future. For culture, you know, want that, the, want to make sure we have the high expectations for our students and our staff, and the reciprocal accountability. And I'll show what that means in a moment. And then also this notion of like one, you know, one team. We're a unified district, and so we're working together. We have our different vantage points, but understanding that we all want the best for Antioch. So like when issues come up, asking questions before drawing conclusions, I think is something that's really, really important. And then I do think there can be more work to connect and engage meaningfully with families and the community. And there, with the Community Schools Grant, the Ed Services Team is starting a parent hub. And then I shared some ideas about how to have parent ambassadors at schools that, that they'll move on. But just want to, did want to hone in on this idea of reciprocal accountability. And the idea that what it means is that we're not just saying, you know, naming goals and putting in place a plan and saying, okay, here's what you have to do. It's here's what we have to do. And we each have a role, and we all need feedback on that role. So again, you, you started modeling that, and I really want to encourage you next year to redo that self-assessment, like Ms. Wright Keyes said, so you could see progress and see where there still is work that needs to be done. Because then that, you know, expectation will carry over to working with the superintendent and the leadership team around their evaluations and their feedback that they're, they're getting, and so on and so forth. And so I feel like that's just, will really help the culture shift by having that reciprocal accountability. I did want to say back to that notion of with one team, and I, yeah, I have a few more slides here, because to end, I think you all have talked about the need to have a strong culture. So I wanted to go a little bit more in depth with that. Do think celebrating progress is important, you know? And again, it's that balance between naming the problems we have, but recognizing where there's, there's progress. I mentioned the assuming positive intent. Also addressing issues directly and respectfully, and making sure people are talking to each other. You get a lot of people come here, say, I have a problem about this and that, and with this person, that person. And to be a positive culture, it's like, okay, but have you first talked to that person? Then if you can't resolve it, did you go to the next level? And so that, in the detailed report, it talks about having some processes so complaints and concerns can be addressed before, you know, coming up to the board meeting. And then, you know, modeling unity and leadership. That doesn't mean we agree about everything, but it means we're working together and kind of following the rules of the game that we've agreed on. So when you have your governance handbook, that will be really powerful to say, hey, here's, you know, here's how we expect ourselves to work and everybody in the district to work. And lastly, as I said, with families and the idea of having, you know, getting that pack really formalized, a parent advisory committee, and then, you know, having some parent leaders at each site who can engage with the district. And then also supporting our multilingual families, having the, you know, and having opportunities to lead meetings in Spanish in a family's primary language or in some of the other languages spoken in, in Antioch. And I already, oh, shoot, I was giving myself 10 minutes, I forgot I got communication. I'm going to need two more minutes. The other part that is really important, and you all have talked about, is communication. And, you know, again, the need to change the narrative around what's happening in, in Antioch. And you really need to devote resources to that. So that's the, the last slide I wanted to share is, is, you know, a district of this size and in this day and age, you can't just hope communications happen, or it can't be like just one part of someone's responsibilities. Somebody needs to be thinking about communication in the district. So I do think it's worth investing in a, in a public information officer. Districts of similar sizes have that. The city of Antioch just did that. Then you can have a centralized communication strategy. And then one of the recommendations would be have that focus on an enrollment campaign. You have families in Oakley, at Pittsburgh, and nearby who are, live in our borders, but asked to go to other schools. Like, we want to keep them here, and you know, if they know what's happening at Dozier-Libby or Deer Valley, some of the career pathways, and got to see like the law pathway like I did, they might be inclined to send their students there. And just if we got 15 more students, that would pay for itself. So just wanted to highlight that recommendation. And then, as I said, you know, share, really see the future is bright for Antioch Unified. And that concludes my report. One minute over time.
Good report.
So this is a good time if we have discussions, reflections, kind of talk about any of these things or questions that trustees may have. Yeah, trustee Kobo Smith?
I really want to thank you for bringing up the information officer, because I, that's something that I've felt very strongly about, and I didn't realize. I just read a book by Recker Johnson that was talking about how to make schools more equitable. And in there, he was referencing that other, other districts actually have these communication officers, and they, some even have marketing people. And I was like astounded. I like, didn't even know that that was a thing. So I really appreciate that you brought that up, because that's been something that now it's out there, because I've been thinking about how to bring it up with Antonio anyways. Thank you.
Yeah.
We did talk in our 101, and thank you for the, as we talked about the family communication, how we have the digest for staff members. It would be really great to have one for our families. So yeah, thank you for that.
I'm excited, because we have talked about community school. We do have the grant. We should be, we're probably working on it. And this falls right into it. We've been talking about engagement. You know, it's always been a dream to have someone in each one of the schools. And I knew your idea, and they have ambassadors in other schools in different ways. And I think it could be done, that we could check to see how the cost would be, but then the administration has to figure out how to do that.
Yeah. I think so much of this feels like, does resonate as like a true analysis. And I think one of the things that I think now hearing this and like seeing it is like, we talk about these things, but having it all in one report, one place, I think, is really a helpful tool for now thinking about our school. I definitely appreciate this report a lot. And I think, you know, to, to that point, I think it emphasizes the importance of like having communication like written and placed somewhere, and how powerful that can be. Because just like seeing all these things written down, I think, makes them more real, more tangible. And so in the same way, having information and a message written or communicated in all number of different ways, visually, through videos, through whatever is the best for our school district, through an information officer, I think I, you know, it's, it's starting to be easier to see the value of doing that. And I think... And I think, to your point, I think what I really appreciate is, you know, how do we achieve this balance of like, that there is so many great things happening while also continuing to note that like we have to be striving for greater student achievement, greater outcomes. We can't just say that great things are happening without the proof or highlighting or ignoring the actual like underlying issue. So, you know, finding that balance is challenging, but I think this like shows that, you know, the ways that there really is really great things happening in this school district and is very honest with the challenges that we have to face.
And Dr. Wayne and I talked about some of the areas in the leadership transition and what I appreciate when you were talking today, I realize and like a lot of this stuff is like infrastructure that we haven't had as a district and it will help in terms of, you know, writing our strategic plan. Something that he and I talked about is the fact that we have so much information, but it's like you just said, it's not in one place. We have our LCAP, we have the draft goals from the Equity Ad Hoc Board Committee, we have the NCUS reports, we have, you know, like our SPED report. We have so much information. I think this is a really good time where we can just bring everything together and create a strategic plan in terms of where we want to go for the future. One thing that I forgot to mention to you, and I thought about it when I left our meeting is around data because data seems to be a key point that we talk about often, like needing more information so that we really can have this reciprocal accountability and kind of this continuous improvement journey is thinking about, you know, like having somebody dedicated to that as well. We're big enough where we need, and part of the reason why we probably didn't have an assessment system is because we don't have someone focused on data. Like that is something they would be requiring, like every time you have a new program, every time you have new curriculum, how are you assessing? Not just students, but teacher efficacy towards using that curriculum. So I think there's definitely, I'm excited about the room for growth and I appreciate you putting it all in one place, so thank you.
Thanks. If, is that okay if I make two final, if, final comments, sorry?
Let me make maybe one final comment and I'll, that way I'll let you have the final word here. Because I think, I think the last point that I want to say here is just, I think that this report is also a testament to, I think, the intentional effort you put like to this role. I think there's a lot of people who, because as someone who's lived in Antioch now 30 years, this resonates so strongly with what is actually going on in the school district, the challenges we're having. And not everyone can come in here in six months and kind of learn and understand that without being intentional about both looking at objective, you know, data and as well as, you know, talking with people and getting those relational pieces to understand how these things are going on. So I just kind of want to uplift that piece as well.
Thank you. And yeah, like I said, it was energizing for me to be able to be in the community and learn. And just two, two comments. One, I did share this with Dr. Williams and I mean, she's going to be, starting on July 1st and ready to hit the ground running. I mean, she's putting in a lot of effort to learn about the district and she's meeting with staff already and, you know, and so, and, you know, appreciated this transition report. And so, yeah, she'll be ready to kind of, you know, pick up the mantle and really move the district forward. And although I'm presenting it as the interim leadership, interim superintendent leadership transition report, I do want to say, you know, this, like everything that has happened in here has been a real team effort and just want to end with acknowledging the cabinet leadership we have here. You know, Carrie Wells stepping up as the interim acting chief human resources, chief human resources officer and really stepping up and embracing that, that role. And then Liz Robbins says, you know, when I said we have some stability in the fiscal and have plans, like she's really navigating some choppy waters and appreciate her leadership. And then all the work, you know, that Christina Barr and that services team has done to get you in a place where improve, where you can start to see some results is really impressive. And just for me, they've been a place where I could get that honest feedback about how things are going, what's working and where there needs to be improvement. So just you have a strong leadership team. So I appreciate what, I think it's actually, use that phrase in the report, in the full report, don't need to start from scratch here. You have a lot to build on and then you have a knowledgeable superintendent who can help you get to the next level. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. And I think, you know, thank you to cabinet also for all the work putting in on this. I think, yeah, this is like so great and I think we should give a round of applause. All right, moving on to item 7B, the 2025-26 Local Performance Indicator Self-Reflection.
All right. Good evening, board. I'm good now. So every year we have as part of the requirements for the local control funding formula, we have to evaluate ourselves in certain areas linked to that LCFF requirements and priorities. And so what we will be sharing with you is just for information this evening. It will, it has to be provided in a regular board meeting and it will also show up on the California dashboard data when that's released in winter time. It is moving fast. So these are the areas that we will be looking and that we reviewed in the indicators. And so you'll be looking at the teachers and curriculum and facilities, the academic standards, parent and family engagement, school climate, and then the broad course of study. So starting first with the priority one, that's focused on the teachers instructional materials and facilities. This is taken directly from the report. So the first box that you see there is focused on our teaching staff for the 22-23 school year. So we do work in a year, two in the rear on this when we receive this data from the state. So in that year, that was what our teaching breakdown was from total FTE, how many teachers we had, our certificated staff, and then where they fit. So clear means that they're fully credentialed. Out of field means that they have a credential, but have not demonstrated subject matter competency in that subject area. Intern, of course, is somebody who is in a program to earn their credential. Ineffective, it sounds terrible, it's not what it is. It's indicating the attributes of the assignment. They have no legal authorization for a permit, credential or waiver. So it doesn't mean that they're not a good teacher, it's just within the, in the categories. And then incomplete, that there was some missing or incorrect information when it was reported to CalPads. So errors typically or missing information. And then unknown is insufficient information reported in CalPads. Oh no, let me go back, sorry. There's so much information on this slide. So then you can see on the bottom two with regards to instructional materials and facilities that we had everything, all the materials that we needed and that our facilities were in good repair. So this is the rating scale that is embedded in that report, going from one of exploration phase down to five, full implementation and sustainability. I wish there was one between three and four, going from initial to full. Like I feel like there needs to be a partial, but this is the scale that we use to work with. And so in this section, we are looking at professional development. And so you can see where we ranked on that scale, instructional materials and then the collaboration walkthroughs and mentoring. We've made some progress. It was lower before. It's improved now that we have our staff and our administrators going in and engaging in walkthroughs and providing meaningful feedback. And then our CTE and teacher support. So different, different things. It could be individual support, professional development for specific groups of teachers or support for teachers who need that. The third priority is centered on parent involvement and family engagement. So here we have in terms of building relationships, we need to continue to improve in this area. We still hear from families that feel as though they're not welcomed in the school or they don't feel connected to the school. And so that is something that we will continue to focus on and work through. Having our, building our partnerships. There are opportunities for our families a couple of times a year to have parent teacher conferences at their school and learn ways in which they can help benefit their students and help them at home. And then seeking input. I know we have had, you know, our processes in place where we have our parent meeting groups, whether it's the school site council at the school sites, parent advisory committee, African Mayr Parent Advisory Committee, the LCAP, the DLEC, all of those things. But one of the things that I want to appreciate and recognize trustee August Smith, that I love your concept of leveling the power, that we all come to the table with equal power. And I've appreciated that experience that our families had with the Special Education Ad Hoc. And I want to continue, I'm looking at ways already of how we can do that, like in our PAC. And that the vision that we have for community schools, having our families contribute to what that will look like. So I appreciate and thank you both for that. So looking at priority six is school climate. For that, we look at the Healthy Kids Survey, the California Healthy Kids Survey. And they're given by the seventh, ninth and 11th graders. So we have a few to look in this area. This one is centered on school connectedness. So it's broken down by grade and ethnic group. So you get a sense of how they're feeling, the percentage that are feeling connected. You see how it can kind of decrease as the students get older. So that's something that we look at. The next one is feeling that they have caring adult relationships. The next one on high expectations, having those for themselves, having adults feel that hold those for them, which is higher. I'm glad to see that. And academic motivation. This is the last one we'll be looking at in this category. So nice to see that there are, they are motivated, but we'd like to see that higher, of course. Last one is priority seven focused on access to broad course of study. And then here you'll see the programs that we have in our high schools particularly, but some certainly also in our middle schools. Having these, these opportunities for students to connect in meaningful ways and earn different certifications and qualifications and meeting those college career indicators by engaging in these courses. And that's it. Any questions?
So this is just a report, but any questions from trustees?
I do have a question.
Yeah, trustee Brown.
And the full report is also attached to this item. This is just a brief overview.
Okay, so my question is rating scale, where it's the one, two, three, four and five.
Yes.
But then you flip the page over in this report on progress. So at the bottom it says teacher support, so it's an average of, it falls in the number four.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think, or what is your take on in regards to, you know how sometimes our teachers do come up to the podium and they address concerns? I just think it's really important that we know what that follow-up is, if their concerns have been addressed, even as board members, because we hear them sharing their concerns and it's really valid to them and it means, because they're passionate about it, because they took their time out to speak about it. And it would be very nice to know what those follow-ups are, so that way we can collectively know that they are being supported in this area. So is that something we can make happen?
Yes, I know when it's a broader question, that we do try to include the information in the Friday board letters so that you can see at least on a broader scale. If it's something individual with certain, you know, teachers, we can certainly find a way to get that information to you more confidentially.
Okay.
I actually have a comment in regards to that too, because like this is part of what we were talking on the special, in the Special Education Ad Hoc Committee. I really, with the strategic goals and once the new superintendent is onboarded, I want to create multimodal feedback loops. You know, we kind of talked about the feedback loops. Just so that we can all hear about how we're, and I want that even for myself as a board member, just to hear like how, sometimes we say things and we don't really understand how they're landing, right?
Right.
And so, and just to like these point, like sometimes teachers come up here and they make comments that we're left like, what just happened with that? Like is anybody following that? So yeah, just closing those loops of communication. I'm really looking forward to this.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, trustee Lexon?
Thank you for the report, Ms. Ibarra. What, so just thinking about everything, but in particular this culture, I know that's something Dr. Wayne talked about in terms of one of the four Cs he shared. What do you plan for next steps in terms of, and I'm looking at the data, like the number, the percentage of students who on the CHIC survey, California Healthy Kids Survey, that responded, strongly agree or not around school connectedness, some other areas the public might not be looking, but they can hear me, caring adult relationships, high expectations. So sometimes they start stronger percentage-wise in the seventh grade.
And it starts to.
Start to decrease in the higher grades. What are, what are the next steps or something you've been, you and your team have been thinking about?
With the community building work that we have been doing, I feel, we are, I feel we are in a better position than we have been in the past in terms of really not only building the relationships, but also respecting what students have to say. And that's something probably that we could do more. Oftentimes, we offer supports in terms of social emotional well-being and in that sense, but truly allowing students to feel valued, I think that's the area that we need to focus in on. There's a lot of, and I think we've mentioned it here, there's a lot of opportunities for our high, high school students, middle school students, even some of our upper grade to get involved in leadership beyond their campus. Or engage in meaningful conversations with their administrators and leaders on their campus to make changes on their, on their school site. So that it's not just things that happen to them, but they have an active role in how they can, again, it's kind of flattening that, that field is that it's not us doing school to them, but them engaging with us of what they want school to be. And so that's where I would like us to see some improvement and focus. I'd like to see, I mean, I think with the, the board members and then having a student advisory committee, I think that's going to be a big role in, in that movement where we're creating that structure from every level.
So increasing student leadership across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I am, it is sad to see that at the very beginning on that, so seventh graders, it's like our first graders or second graders, and then all of a sudden it starts to drop and figuring out why.
Yeah.
It's the same amount of students, aren't they? Because I know we dropped some students at the end, but you're still comparing it with the same number.
Right. Well, I think, I mean, if you've been in education long enough and you've worked through the levels, you see the, right? You got the enthusiasm of, enthusiasm of a kindergartner and then it starts to wane over the, over the years as homework set in and school becomes something that's not, I think, as engaging, you know, for, especially for older children, that it need, we, we have to look at different ways to engage our students and make them feel valued and capable.
But the expectations is high in that part, in that survey, it stays.
It's higher.
It stays good.
I wouldn't say, I would want it to be at the top. That would be.
And the motivation. It's just in the, the one that I'm, you know, sad about is the connection, connecting.
Yeah.
It seems to be low.
Yeah.
Trustee Kobo, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did like to, as somebody who has currently a ninth grader, Deer Valley, I think one of the biggest things we can do for our children is just create spaces where they can be heard.
Yes.
Because a lot of them don't feel heard.
Right.
And they have their own thoughts and ideas about what they deserve and what they've seen their peers get at other districts. Like my granddaughter is very in tune to, she has a friend who attends another district and, you know, that district sends her friend a newsletter and she finds out about all these events that are happening. a newsletter, and she finds out about all these events that are happening in the community, and she's always on top of things, and they get to go to key club, and I know our, Annie Akai were taken to LA for the same leadership key club, but I know that Deer Valley didn't get to go, because she is a key club member, so maybe create some consistency across the board. Those are just some suggestions that I have. Create forums for them to be heard, and then provide more opportunities for them.
I want to share two things. First of all, in my appreciation, I was delinquent in mentioning a critical member of the leadership team, who is Maya Bellis, just an amazing executive assistant, yeah. And as an example of how amazing she is in terms of going above and beyond, she saw a need where some of these activities, just what's the communication to families, talking about communication, and without a PIO, who was really, you know, figuring out what's the best way to share with families? So if you want to share what you have brought on board around Peach Jar, this is a way to get, it's, it's something other districts have used that, I think, long overdue here, that will really help get the word out about the different kind of events you're, you're speaking to.
Yeah, so we're going to start utilizing Peach Jar in this next school year, and it's, so the flyers will be distributed electronically, and we can even schedule it to go out once a week, so families aren't constantly, but then they can go in and look. They're able, they're interactive flyers, so they can click on links, they can search, like, if they want to search for soccer, and they can bring up all the flyers related to soccer. So it's just going to be, and we can, we're also looking at accessibility, so it can go into 110 different languages, it'll make, it'll, because that's not a requirement of, if a community organization wants to submit a flyer, we don't require they put it in different languages. So this will allow it to be more accessible, so it's just a good community engagement piece.
Good.
And I just have two quick comments, it's more of a frustration from the, I guess, the Department of Education side in terms of how these things are like communicated and thinking about, you know, whether it might make sense for us to think about how we can make better use of these types of reports, because I think, one of the things that I think about as we were looking at the California Healthy Kids Survey data is, you know, what's our benchmark when we're looking at those kinds of things? Like, of course we want all of those things to be 100%, but what's like, you know, the state comparison, or even, maybe we've done great in the practice now of disaggregated data, but we also need aggregated data, maybe as a comparison, like, what's the actual overall for all of our students, that way we know which student groups are below or above the average when it comes to looking at the entire set. So maybe that might be a place to think about there. And then, maybe I just kind of wanted to highlight, just, I think, how quickly sometimes that this flips between, like, and again, this is a frustration from the Department of Education side, not the report you all put together, but we jump between like practices and outcomes, because those rating scales, right, are about practices, so when we, I guess I want to comment a little bit on the, the conversation here, when it looks at teacher supports, that's about what are the practices we're doing to support teachers, not whether teachers feel supported. And, and I think that's an important distinction to make sure that, that we talk about, because here a four means that we're implementing all of these practices, and a five means that we've implemented them in a way that they're now culturally sustainable part of our, our organization, and so, 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 yeah, it's, it's a little bit frustrating sometimes, like, see, some things are like practice-based, and like, well, what's the outcome of those practices, and some things are outcome-based, and like, well, what are the, you know, to, to some of the points that Trustee Lathan made about, you know, like, what's actually happening now with our, like, students, like, lead to, like, these kinds of different, like, outcomes or feelings, or feelings of connectedness, or these different parts and pieces, and we don't get those practices there, so that's more of a comment, not really of a, of a specific question piece there. But yeah, unless there's any other, yeah, Trustee Lathan?
I noticed in the California Healthy Kids Survey, when we get to 11th grade, there are no white students, there are no percentages for white students, why?
Not everyone is taking the survey. So they're given, they're given out to all of the students, but not all students take the, the survey. And that's something that we're, we just had a meeting recently, actually yesterday, on how we can encourage those to be taken by as many students as possible. It's considered, I wouldn't say considered, but it is looked at sometimes as being this optional survey.
So you're not saying that we don't have any white students in the 11th grade, you're saying that the students...
Correct. They didn't take it. They didn't take the exam, or the survey, I should say.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, because I like to come, you know, I'm looking at, over time, and that was the one group that I couldn't look at for, you know, cross-grade level, because it ended, and so I'm curious how they're feeling.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Great, well, thank you so much for the, the report, this is really great. Moving on to consent items, we have consent items A through GG, do we have any consent items to discuss?
I do.
Yes, Trustee Brown?
Okay. Okay, so it's in regards to the playgrounds, I just, I'm looking at some, I'm pulling up some of them, and I know it's, it was dated, like, for example, some of the bids were given for Orchard Park on June 12th, so it's dated for the 26th, voting on it, when is groundbreaking completion? Is it going to be for the 27, 28 school year, is it going to be completed at around what time?
So I, I don't have the chart in front of me, but we had it in the Friday board letter, and we had a breakdown on which ones we're going to be doing during the summer, and which ones we were going to do during fall, so I can get that information to you.
Okay, yeah, I did see that, but I just noticed, like, each site has different, they're not all getting the same items, so I guess the ones that are with the minimum items being added to the yard are...
No, some, they all have different size play spaces, and so they all have different, so we had committees from all the different school sites that they got to select, which, which they wanted for their size, so that's...
Okay, all right, thank you. And not also, the reason why I'm asking is because I know the season is about to change, we're like, it's hot now, but then for winter time, with, you know, with those being in factor of rain, cold weather, so that's what I was concerned about, when it would be completed.
So I think the goal is some of them to be installed and completed during summer, and then the others in the wintertime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was all.
Any other, yeah, Trustee Lathan?
For, on Letter X, Certified Human Resource Report, already talked to Dr. Wayne about it, but I am, I was surprised to see so many education specialists resign, and those are our special day class teachers, I'm assuming RS stands for resource teacher, so I'm hoping to get, that we can get information about how people, like, why people are resigning, because that's, I was like, wow, like, every person except for one is a special ed teacher resigning. So that's something that I'm just thinking about in terms of culture, and it could be, you know, good reasons, but what, what are those reasons? We want people to stay, strong people to stay. And then, there was something else, I left my, my notes at home, which is probably a good thing, I'm tired, that's it. Oh, just for, in the future, again, for when we, you know, transition to our Dr. Williams, when we have contracts, it would be nice, and I think for the board to think about, when contracts are being renewed from, from vendors, from consultants, that we get information about why we need to renew those particular contracts. We have people who are doing, you know, leadership programs with students, or after-school programming, whatever it is, like, what is the rationale for us to continue those contracts, just so that we can have information about it. So monitoring, to, and to continue with the monitoring, to develop a monitoring system around that. That's it for me.
So I, I absolutely agree with you that we want to gather as much data as possible around our resignations, because we want to retain our teachers, especially with the shortage of special education teachers, and we do have phenomenal teachers all around, and we have some exceptional special education teachers. I think part of this particular date of report, the June 25th, becomes a little bit skewed, because I know for certain four of the teachers that are on here, we tried really, really hard to work with them on credentialing issues, and unfortunately, we just got the last round of some of those test exams, and, and they've run out of credentialing options, so therefore they took the option to resign, and a few of them have actually opted to come back and sub for us automatically at the start of the year, to hopefully pass those exams and be able to have another credential available to them, so.
See, that's perfect data, and, and the reason why I'm saying that is because as a person with a specialist credential, it's not an easy assessment, and so then how do we create a cohort of, or some kind of program within our district, and we may already have this, where there are study sessions, or they can, right, so that we're not losing strong people, but that's the kind of data that would be helpful for decision-making, because then maybe we create a program, like, if you are, you know, taking your assessment, I took mine a few times, right, like, because it was not easy for me, and so, but I also ended up getting help and tutoring and support in terms of, like, how do you actually answer these questions, because there's a, there's a method to some of them, so, thank you.
Trustee Kovac Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw another idea out there, too, is like, because in nursing, we had special accreditations as well, and we would do cohort preparation, so, like, in the, in, I don't know, I'm looking at Liz, because I don't know if we really have the funds for it, but it, it might be worthwhile to get the funds for this, because special education teachers are, are really needed.
Unless there's other questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move approval for consent calendar A all the way to GG.
I second that.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve consent items A through items GG, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 11 action items, we have the 2025-26 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents, we had the hearing for this last meeting, and so what we have next is to actually adopt this here, I'm not sure if staff has additional context to want to add, yeah. Otherwise, unless people have other questions that came up since our last meeting, I will entertain a motion to adopt the 2025-26 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents as presented.
I move to approve.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the 2025-26 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion passes. Moving on to 20, the item B, the 2025-26 Final Adoption Budget, so similarly, we had a public hearing at our last meeting, and no changes have been made since then, so unless there's additional questions from trustees or additional context from staff, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2025-26 budget as presented.
I move approval.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the 2025-26 budget, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on next to item C, we have the Local Control and Accountability Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, Federal Addendum, so maybe I'll turn over to staff to add just a little bit of context for this.
Okay, so again, annually, this is a document that has to be approved along with the LCAP, it's just ensuring that we are addressing all of the required provisions under ESSA, and are allowed to get our federal funds.
So unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the federal addendum.
I move to approve.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Local Control and Accountability Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, Federal Addendum as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to the consolidated application, so again, I guess...
I turned myself off. This one is, we, an application we have to submit to be able to participate in and receive our federal categorical dollars, so it's just a one-page application.
So again, unless there's questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve...
I move approval.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consolidated application as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to item E, Initial Proposal from Antioch Unified School District to Antioch Education Association for 2025-2026, I will turn over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so last meeting, you heard the district's initial proposal for negotiations for its work with Antioch Education Association, this is just the action to accept the district's initial proposal to begin the negotiation cycle for 25-26 school year.
Great, so again, unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal.
I move approval.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the initial proposal from the Antioch Unified School District to Antioch Education Association for the 2025-2026 school year, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to item F, Initial Proposal from Antioch Unified School District for the 2025-2026 to the California School Employees Association, Chapter 85.
Yes, so similarly to AEA and the district's proposal with AEA, this is the district's proposal to take action for the 25-26 negotiation cycle with CSCA.
Great, so again, any questions, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal.
I move to approve.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the initial proposal from Antioch Unified School District for the 2025-2026 to the California School Employees Association, Chapter 85, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. And then next is item G, the reorganization of three classified management positions in the maintenance department.
Yes, so this request is under the Maintenance Operations and Facilities Department, and in need to reorganize three classified management positions, really, the change is necess, is necessary to improve the flow of work and to ensure that there is more effective oversight across the maintenance and operations department here at the district. The current job descriptions no longer align well with the department's needs holistically, especially given the scope and nature of the work ahead for the maintenance and operations department. Due to the growing demands of the department, it's essential, really, that we move forward with the change in the job descriptions. The changes to the job descriptions will help maintain strong leadership, improve the service delivery of the maintenance and operations department, better support our students as well as staff and the community. So the governing board is being asked to approve the revised job descriptions, following board approval as necessary, the Classified Personnel Commission will review the appropriate job descriptions presented here this evening, and will determine the knowledge, skills, and abilities, and also the minimal qualifications required for each position, those will be reviewed, and then the Personnel Commission, as needed, will also determine the correct placement of each position on the board-approved salary schedule, and for your review, you can see the current job title that we have in existence, and then the revised job titles in, in that chart, along with the revised job descriptions.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan?
Thank you. Ms. Wells, can you share the process that you engaged in to come to the conclusion about the new job descriptions and titles, like, and who was involved in the discussion?
Yeah, so really, these discussions began about eight months ago with director, with some of the directors in, in Maintenance and Operation, also Liz Robbins, who helps oversee MNO, Classified Director Bunton, and myself, along with guidance from Dr. Martinez, kind of in re-envisioning what those three positions in management might look like, so that really started about eight months ago, and then some of that work was kind of tabled for a bit, and then more recently, Dr. Wayne has been having meetings with Maintenance and Operations, just holistically, there have been other conversations with Director Bunton, really, Director Bunton's role as the Classified Personnel Commission, Commissioner, he serves as a secretary to the commission... he serves as a secretary to the commission. Um, and one of his roles is to frequently review job descriptions. So typically, um, that is also part of the process as well.
Thank you. So, um, I remember you said you were meeting with maintenance departments. I guess what I'm trying to get to is, the people who will be, um, who will be led by, who will be, yeah, led by these new positions, have they had input into what they need as employees?
So we did talk with the leadership team of, um, around the job description and the roles. And then, in the, um, ma, Maintenance Operations and Facilities Leadership Team meetings, they've now established structures to get feedback from the staff. So, for example, uh, Maintenance meets weekly, um, Grounds and, um, Grounds meets, I think, every other week, and Print Shop meets monthly. I don't know that they specifically talked about this job description, but it's broad enough that it, that it creates the expectation that they will get feedback from employees to move, uh, to make sure that they're supporting them in their work.
Unless there's any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, these reorganization of the management positions.
I move approval.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the reorganization of three classified management positions within the maintenance department, uh, the Assistant Director Operations to Assistant Director, Maintenance Operations and Facilities, uh, the Supervisor, Custodial to Supervisor Maintenance, uh, Operations and Facilities, and Supervisor, Facilities, and Operations to Supervisor, uh, Maintenance, Operations and Facilities. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, moving on next to 14, Resolutions for Immediate Action. We have Resolution, uh, Item A, Resolution Number 2024-2559, Education Protection Account for 2025-26.
Yes, this is an annual resolution, um, as part of our LCFF funding from the state. Um, it's the Temporary Sales and Income Tax. Um, and it needs to be approved stating that we will not use any of these funds for administration.
Unless there's any questions, I'll, um, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move approval.
Great.
I second.
Good, since it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2559, Education Protection Account for 25-26. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, next we have Resolution 2024-2560, Authorizing Provisional Internship Permit.
Yes, uh, this is the standard request for, um, requesting provisional internship permits. And, um, these permits are available through the State of California Teaching Credentialing Commission to grant school districts the ability to employ these individuals that are listed, who are in the process of meeting subject matter competency, um, on their way to, um, becoming internship eligible.
Great, so unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Wells, how are these, thinking about the, the, the previous conversation about, uh, teachers needing support to pass assessments to get their credentials? Um, what, how are student, how are stat, um, folks who are in these positions supported towards that too?
Yeah, so actually, um, during the 23-24 negotiation cycle, our, um, ATIP, uh, Organizational Group, which is a, a group of AEA, um, members, as well as, uh, district staff, uh, Amy Benton Court, uh, for example, in Ed Services, um, they met and came up with contract language that not only would support teachers in induction, once they hold their preliminary credential, but would support beginning teachers who were on a provisional internship permit or a short-term staff permit. And so, the 24-25 school year was the first year that we were able to roll that program out, so that, um, teachers who are in the process of becoming, uh, of holding those preliminary teaching credentials, but are already teaching under these waivers and these, these permits, could also receive support from mentor teachers, um, support from, um, directors. Um, it doesn't give them direct test support, like we were talking about earlier. But, um, prior to that work with, um, AEA and our, uh, Beginning Teacher Support Programs, there really wasn't support for teachers who were, um, under these short-term staff permits or provisional internship permits. So I know, um, Director Benton Court worked really closely with Artosa, um, who helps support all beginning teachers in induction. And now, uh, we, we have this program as an option as well.
So, do these teachers also need to take an assessment to get their creden, to clear their credentials?
Yeah, so a lot of these teachers on the provisional internship permit are still needing to pass, um, one or all of their CSAT exams. And some of them are also needing to pass the RICA as well. And the RICA, the reading assessment, um, is actually going through a revision coming up for this next year. It's a whole new test. We're hoping that it's a little bit more accessible, um, and that we have a, a greater percentage of teachers passing on their first try.
So I think it's something to think about for this group too, then, is how do we help test prep with them?
Yeah, they're, they're, it's something that I'm really interested in researching, because they are difficult.
And by the way, I took the NSAT, that's how long ago I did the.
I, I took the single-subject one, yes, and, and tutored people in that as well. They're difficult.
And just so everyone knows, we do have a revised version of this, um, that's sitting in front of us. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at that. So unless there's any other questions, I'll, um, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I make a motion.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2024-2560, Authorizing Provisional Internship Permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to C, Resolution 2024-2561, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2025-26 School Year.
Yes, so again, this is a standard request. Um, all of the certificated, um, employees that you see on the attachment already hold a credential. Um, these are single-subject credential holders who are slotted to teach, um, in areas where there really isn't a credential that exists, um, specific to that area. Um, but there are relevant provisions under ed code. And, um, so the request is that the attached resolution for these teachers serving in full-time positions with full credentials need this additional, um, credential authorization for the, a special assignment portion of their 25-26, um, school year teaching assignment.
So unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move approval.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2024-2561, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2025-26 School Year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, moving on to, uh, Item D, Resolution Number 2025-2662, Providing for the Levy of the Special Tax in Community Facilities District, Number 1994-1.
Yes, so these are annual resolutions, both D and E, uh, for us to both levy and collect, um, the taxes for the communities.
Great, any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Approval.
Great, so it's, uh, properly moved, is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2562, Providing for the Levy of the Special Tax in the Community Facilities District, Number 19 and 94-1 for the fiscal year 2025-26. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. And then, moving on to Item E, Resolution Number 2024-2563, Providing for the Levy of the Special Tax in Community Facilities District, Number 2004-1. So this is, again, another, um, special, uh, tax to levy and collect, similar to Item D. Uh, so unless there's any questions, I'll entertain another motion to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2563, Providing for the Levy of the Special Tax in the Community Facilities District, Number 2024-1 for the fiscal year 2025-26. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on next to 17, Board Policies for Second Reading and Action. We have, uh, Item A, Revised Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures. This is the second reading, so this is coming to us, uh, again. Um, so unless there's any questions, uh, since the last time we saw this, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Revised Board Policy.
I move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, to adopt Revised Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, next, we're moving on to items for general information. Uh, so maybe we'll kind of, uh, these are just for information, so, uh, maybe we'll group A through E to kind of, if people have questions on, uh, Administrative Regulation, uh, 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures, Administrative Rule 13 point, 1312.4, William Uniform Complaint Procedures, um, and the, uh, two exhibits related to 1312.4 in Items C and D, and Administrative Regulation 4261.1, uh, Personal Illness slash Injury Leave. Um, so any, uh, additional context that staff wants or feels needs to be provided for those?
So, uh, just a reminder, last meeting, we also had administrative regulations. These don't, don't require board approval, because they're how we operationalize the policies. But for transparency, we bring forward when administrative regulations are being updated. These are all being updated, similar to the board policy that you just approved, to be in compliance with new regulations from the California Department of Education. So, uh, just notes what those changes are.
Any questions on any of those?
I move approval.
Oh, we don't, we don't need to approve those, just in case people have questions, yeah.
Keep it going.
Great, and then, uh, Item F, Quarterly Report on Williams Uniform Complaints. Again, this is just for information. Uh, there was no, uh, Williams complaints during, uh, the quarter for April-June. Um, but any questions or, great, again, uh, in any context, uh, staff wants to provide? Nope, all right. Um, and so, moving on to future agenda items from, uh, board members. Any future agenda items?
I, I would like to.
Yeah, Vice President Rocha.
I know that you're not at that position yet, but I'd love to know more about the community school grant, the process, where we're at, where we're going, uh, what are we looking at, you know, who's going to be involved and all that. And I think, it's just personally, I, I'm sure the board would all would like to know, but I don't know at what time you want to bring that to us. So is it too early to ask?
You know, one of the things Dr. Williams has talked about, um, is establishing a board governance calendar with you all. And, or, as you may recall, that was something, when you talked about the structures that didn't exist, we did it for this year, but we haven't done one for next year, because you have a new superintendent coming in. So why don't, uh, we just make a note of it, and in your meeting with Dr. Williams, um, note that you, you should consider when it makes sense to have a community schools update on the new board governance calendar.
And then my next, either, is also the, um, Army situation over at Deer Valley, the schooling.
JROTC.
Yeah, that's, that's the wording, uh, as to where it's go, but that's starting in September, is my understanding. So there has to be a process now of what we're doing in hiring and who's, you know, and how many people do we have already signing up for it? So that's, that might be current, I don't know.
We, it's, sorry. We, um, we do have a current posting in conjunction with the Army, um, up on Edjoin and through the, um, Arm, through the Army website, where they recruit for JROTC instructors. Um, so as instructors apply, the Army sort of vets to make sure that they hold the appropriate credentials, um, to serve in that capacity. Um, and then, once we do have a pool of applicants, even if it's just a couple, um, then, um, more than likely, the principal, along with, uh, probably director, um, will conduct interviews for hiring. I, I will tell you, in my former district, it's very exciting to have that program. Uh, when I was a principal, we brought forward, um, JROTC, and it's thriving. Um, the hiring process, you have to wait for people who are interested, retired Army, to apply. So, sometimes it takes a little while to get some of that interest, but we are a desirable area in California. And so I'm sure the, um, head official through the Army will be reaching out to us, uh, in human resources to, to continue that work. But we do have a current posting, we've had it now for, I think, about three weeks.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
And then, do we, do we have like a consensus that we do want a report from community schools, and maybe an update on JROTC at some point, kind of, uh, in conjunction with, uh, what Dr. Williams kind of, uh, what we all kind of feel feels best for our governance calendar? Yeah, yeah, I'm seeing enough nods. Yeah, trustee Lathan, and then we'll go, uh, trustee Kobo Smith.
Um, I'm wondering, this is probably a good conversation for our board governance, um, sessions that we have with Doctor, with, um, Ms. Wright, uh, is, we have, um, our established committees, our ad hoc special ed board committee, and then our city schools committee. Uh, we also talked about in our, um, trainings with her, our governance trainings, about a policy committee, and I think, and then we need a budget committee, like, the things that, that strong boards, the committees that strong boards have. Um, and so, I'm hoping that at some point, we can restructure our agenda so that those things are already on there. So right now, the way we talk about it is, uh, reports and comments from the board. But I noticed, as I've been researching other school districts, some of them have a designated section for committee shareouts. So just something for us to think about in the future, and I'm just putting it on the table.
So again, I, maybe just get a good consensus of nod, that that's something that we also, I mean, I think I definitely agree that, um, and something, yeah, planning on working on with Dr. Williams. So, yeah, enough nods.
Good point.
I would like to go back to the community schools. Um, when you do, um, compile the report, if you could give a special focus on the parent hub and what that structure would look like?
Great, any other future agenda items? Great, so we'll move on then to reports, uh, relative to memberships or other organizations. Uh, maybe we can start with, uh, trustee Lathan.
I don't have any reports.
Vice President. Uh, trustee Kobo Smith?
Reports, Kobo. Uh, you know, I do have something that I do, I, I want to say from the dais, just because I was not here, um, for the official vote for Dr. Williams. Um, I just want it to be understood that I definitely would have voted yes, and I was really saddened that I wasn't here to welcome her, along with my colleagues. And I just want to thank you guys for holding it down. Um, I went to China very content, knowing that you guys had the, the votes to move everything forward. So, thank you.
Uh, trustee Brown?
So I have a request. Hopefully, we can squeeze out the budget. It looks like we're talking at you guys versus talking together. So the way the dais, I have like a whiplash right now, just joking, I really don't. But just, the way that we're seated, I know it was mentioned before about kind of like curving it a little bit, so we can see each other, so we know when we're talking and not talking over each other, um, because everything is recorded, right? So, this is the first, um, district that I see that everyone's straight in a marching band line type thing. So I don't know, but that was just a comment, I just wanted to say that. Um, I'm excited about our new superintendent starting, and we're, and thanks, um, for sharing your comment about, um, standing with us on the decision that we made. Um, and then also, I, there's a special student that me, um, trustee Smith and Mayor, um, trustee Rocha had the privilege of meeting, um, at the encore graduation, his name, and I hope I don't butcher his name, because his family is watching, charger to my head, um, Mikhail South. Um, he graduated, and if you were at that graduation, you would have seen, he was like the sharpest boy in the, I mean, he was just really, really on point. And so, it was good to see all the students. But I wanted to, um, just acknowledge him, because he is a kinder. And there were some great levels of testing that he's done. Um, and I'm not going to read all of, everything that he's accomplished, but I do want to acknowledge him, and I want to encourage every family member, um, every guardian that's listening, please feel free to send in those shout-outs to your students, because these are your babies, and you guys are the best advocates for your children. So, so I don't want anyone saying that, why is she picking this one family? Or why are they picking this one family? It's because we want to be able to hear those great stories about, um, students' achievement. So he's a kinder. Um, he's reading at, um, they did a second grade language arts. Um, the textbook was called Wonder's Literature Anthology, and there, it's breaking down to 15 stories. And from every story, there was a test taken. Um, and I don't, I'm not sure how many questions were on. And I don't, I'm not sure how many questions were on each test, but vocabulary, he scored 100%. We're talking about a T-Care. For comprehension, he scored 100% as well. Language Arts on the Flex Diagnostic Action Plan, Language Arts was like 410, overall reading was 420, reading strategies was 360, vocabulary at 550. Just the Reading Enterprise Test scores, I mean, they're high. Literature 99, informational texts, key ideas and details 99, craft and structure 97, language 99. And so thank you for the district, who will be honoring him with a certificate that they were giving to the principal at Encore to present to them. And I just wanted to give him his flowers, give him his acknowledgement because that is a job well done. So thank you.
Yes, Trustee Lathan.
I wanted to go back to what Trustee Brown talked about in terms of us being in a straight line. Are you referring to the conversation? It sounds like you're referring to the conversation we had with our consultant, who does our governance training, and wondering about whether or not we should restructure the shape of the dais so that we can all see each other?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. And then I think you referenced Ms. Robbins because she's over, she's our budget, our CBO. And so anyway, I don't know what that looks like.
Maybe I'll jump in here, or do you want to share? Oh, yeah, so I know staff, so we do have it in our budget to update the boardroom, and I know staff is working on what that design could look like, the timing of like that update, so that is in the works. And we'll get more information on that when more like finalized decisions are made, so we can give input.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I was going to say. I'm glad the staff is doing it, and this is our meeting, so we have to give input. So, but I just heard you say that that will be our input.
Yeah, yeah. We just need a starting place to have that conversation, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Great. And then I'll just share very quickly. So this is the book that I forgot to bring physically last time. But the book that I have for today is called I Am Every Good Thing, and it's by Derek Barnes and Gordon James. And again, I think, as we conclude this school year and conclude our, you know, board meetings for this year, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, the good things that happen in the school district are the result of all the work that we're all doing, and that we're all have all this capacity and potential before us. And again, I think we've been set up really well for this upcoming school year. So thanks again, Superintendent Wayne, for really setting us up to be every good thing that we are, and really take advantage of those pieces.
Great. So our next future meetings are August 13th and August 27th. So we do not have any meetings in July. And then lastly, we are at adjournment, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Great, since we've, it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes.